Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, I'm getting in trouble with my IT department. I'm ready. Good afternoon, everybody. Good to be here for the mid-month meeting of Liberty County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for coming. Thank you for those who are listening to us out on Facebook. I am hearing from you that you are tuning into our meetings and that you find them informative. So that's a good thing. That's a good thing. But it's a team effort. I could not do without this team that sits on my right and my left. They're in my absence today. That absent without notice, but absent because of notice. We do expect maybe Commissioner Frazier to step in just a little while. So Commissioners, good afternoon to you. Good to see you all. We had kind of a busy week with activities last week, too. So we continue to grow and there are good things going on. We're happy to report that to our citizens. Mr. Brown had the meeting properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you. Thank you. This time, we're going to stand for our prayer and pledge allegiance. Mr. Mosley, can I?
Yes, sir.
Default to you again, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Good to see everyone tonight. Let us pray. Most kind and benevolent Father, we thank you for all your boundless blessings that you bestow upon us on a daily basis. We ask Father God for your divine insight as does this body deliberate on the business of this community. Father God, we thank you for being merciful for us and lowering the numbers, and we pray for those who are going through with COVID and other illnesses and diseases, these and all the other blessings we thank and praise you for, for us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown informed me that we have a visitor from ACCG. Mr. Michael Quinn is here. Good to have you, sir. Please do.
Ready for this one?
Thank you for being here with us, Mike. Proclamation and recognition, proclamation for Ahmard Aubrey Day. Ms. Thomas is not going to make it, you think?
Yes, she would.
She would? All right. Well, let's maybe come back to that then if we will then. If you don't mind, Mr. Trent Long, we'll move on to your report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I should have a copy of our status report. Now, you've had to look at it. There are a couple of things that I do want to kind of point out or let you know what's going on. Most of them are on the second page. The payment marking package is ready to go out for bids. It's about $140,000 worth of striping. Most of it falls within District 3 and District 1. We, I met with Kim McLaughlin this afternoon trying to make sure that we have the funding targeted and identified before we put this thing out for bid. But once we've done that with your blessing, we'd like to go ahead and take that one out for bid. The Miller Park Recreation Park improvements, we have had the pre-construction conference with the contractor and they're trying to get everything rolling. They're going to be, their start date is March 7th, so they'll be starting to move things out there. They have already ordered their pipe, but there is over an eight-week delivery for the pipe for that job. So material things, we're trying to get the materials before we start to count their time too badly against them. So try to get ahead on materials and ordering everything.
What is that start date now?
March 7th.
Okay.
Yes, March 7th. And Palm Drive, the guys are substantially complete on that. The, there are a couple of manhole rings that we've had to wait for the extension to come in, or they have, and as soon as that comes in, they'll be through with those jobs. Other than that, I'll kind of open it up to questions that you may have or things, and we'll be opening bids here in like a week and a half on the Gum Branch.
On Gum Branch, a week and a half?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman, I have one question, Trent. Trent, on the, on the Point South Drive, are they going to, the contractor going to be responsible for fixing the road shoulders?
Yeah, they're supposed to be out there doing that today.
Okay.
So I'll touch base with Andy to make sure that is finished, but that was.
We got a call telling me it was on the contract, so.
If you would pass the information along, which resident may be.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that we double-check that area for you and make sure that it's covered.
Yeah, Mike Davis is, he has, he knows Andy real well. I think he's been talking to Andy about it, but I just wanted to mention it, that when I went there, maybe Tuesday, they, it was.
Still had a lot to do, I think.
Yeah, still had a lot to do. Okay.
So, but then, I'll double-check on that.
Okay.
My information that I got was that they're substantially finished on that. But if there, something's not right on it that you see that I need to do or take care of, Gary, please let me know.
Okay.
Because I think we finally have their attention. I'm sorry, I was trying to start going down the list again.
Trent, I'm not sure how much of a hassle it is, but you know, I know on Palm Drive, I haven't seen a Splot sign.
Yes, sir.
If we can remember that when we do these projects, or the citizens have been know that Splot dollars are at work.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Especially since we're nearing that season again.
Yes, sir. Mr. Frazier and I have already penned in a request for that several months ago, a month ago. So I'll double-check on where that was or kind of what happened there.
On Palm?
Now, I understand that it was.
Right, they do.
But they said one was up, but I didn't see it.
Right, they, they put it up at Palm and Point South, but I remember years ago, I requested that we updated our, our Splot.
Is it the same old sign?
It's still the same old signs. I don't, I don't know where our.
Well, we changed to some new ones. I'm confused as to why they'd use an old one, but I'm going to do it.
Right.
I'll find out.
Absolutely.
So we made some new ones, if you remember.
Right.
Let me see, so.
Trent, last thing, on a track lane, you know, we're going to restart that project, you know?
Yes, sir. I put it back in the queue to get done.
Yeah, I saw it. But I just need to get with you and I'll give you a call. I want to know how far down we're going. Are we going all the way to the track or we just going?
Well, I think you and I probably ought to get out there and write it because I have that same question.
Yeah. I mean, I, you could see where the, where the road stops, but I think it actually is supposed to go all the way to the railroad track, but we'll, we'll, we'll see how far we want to go with the, with the project.
Yes, sir. And you know, there's no right of way for it, so everything gets, going to be getting right of way.
Right.
And one of my real questions, too, is I need to get all the way to the railroad ditch to get rid of that water.
Right.
And so that's what I really need to talk to you about on it.
Okay.
Just kind of get our boots on the ground.
I'll get with you. Maybe not this week, but you know, sometime before the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
All right, sir.
Thank you, my friend. I think I'm next. Anyhow, let me hang tight.
Yes, you are. Trade Hill Road.
Did we need, excuse me, did we need approved to bid on the strapping?
To go out to the strapping?
Yes.
If you would like to go ahead and tell me to go ahead and put it out, once I have the funding identified, I'll be glad to do that.
I don't think you need a motion. We just go ahead and instruct him to put that out.
Go ahead, okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, good.
Mr. Long, what about the Trade Hill?
Trade Hill, that's the next one.
That's where he's going next.
Yeah, that's why I didn't cover his part of my report.
He's got a separate.
Is that why you left the E off tree?
I did?
I thought it was a new drainage project.
Well, one thing you can count on is that I do not know how to spell.
Okay, all right.
And I'm not going to catch a spelling mistake.
Amen.
Just make it up.
There's a lot of other things I can do, but spelling is not one of them.
Make, make up for it in your presentation, sir.
There you go. All right. So on Trade Hill Road, we have everything worked out for the easement for Trade Hill Road, $2,500 for the drainage easement. I just need to get you guys' approval for that $2,500 expenditure.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Let's get this on the road if we can, Commissioners.
Chairman, I make a motion that we allow the $2,500 for the easement on the Trade Hill project.
Second.
Motion and secondly, we approve the $2,500 cost for the easement at Trade Hill so we can get those folks some relief before another one of those monsoon rain comes again. It'll start raining.
Now, Mr. Chair, Mr. Long.
Yes, sir.
When we go that way, we want to clean up Islands Highway.
Oh, yes, sir. Clinton and I have already talked about different things that we need to work on, down Islands Highway, up Trade Hill Road, and down Fort Morford.
Now, what kind of back, is this going to put any pressure on Stevens Road?
No, sir.
Put any pressure on Stevens Road?
No, sir. No, sir. This, this water won't even go to Stevens Road.
Okay. All right, motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Approve, sir. Start that tomorrow.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate you all's note.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. We are honored to have in our presence our very esteemed Coroner today. He will come and bring us his report.
Good evening.
Good evening. His assistant coroner.
Mr. Tanyan is going to pass out some, just some numbers for, for you all from last year that we put together, and I know y'all have been asking for some numbers. How you doing?
All right.
Well, I think, first of all, I said, good evening, but I think that we sent out an email like a few, like a few months ago, just want to discuss, first of all, about the concurrent jurisdiction on Folks Stewart and kind of explain it a little more in depth. Me and Mr. Brown had already talked about it, but the concurrent jurisdiction pretty much gives us the, the, the right to be able to work on Folks Stewart as far as cases are concerned on Folks Stewart. They used to have a pathologist on Folks Stewart that was doing all the cases on Stewart. That pathologist retired, and so when the concurrent jurisdiction came about in 2015, it just gave us the actual right to go out and actually work cases on Folks Stewart, like contract services pretty much. Based on Title 45, since it's in Liberty County, then it's our responsibility to make sure we take care of, of those deaths that happen in Liberty County. So that's how the concurrent jurisdiction came up about. So it's not that we are, me and Mr. Brown, we do nothing, that is something that is, how would I say, obligated, Mr. Brown, or how, it's not something that we're mandated as far as Folks Stewart is concerned, but because of Title 45 is the reason why we go on Folks Stewart with our concurrent jurisdiction. So, and, and Mr. Tanyan passed out was the numbers from last year, the case that we had last year, and we got them all broken down into Folks Stewart cases, natural deaths, the homicide, suicides, the accidents we had, we undetermined, we still have about, and it's not pending 15 now, we have probably about 10 pending cases left. Those 10 pending cases are cases from last year that are mega-examined cases that we don't have a cause of death yet, so those cases are still pending. So they're, deaths have not been signed out on yet, so they're still pending. And also, coming in front of the Commissioners tonight, I want to come for the Commissioners to ask for a position to be moved from part-time to full-time position. I have, my deputy coroners are all making same amount, which is like $14,400. They're making a actual a month, I mean a year, I'm sorry, a year. I want to move one deputy coroner into a full-time position, which will be additional $20,600, which would be equal to about $35,000 a year for a full-time position. And so I was coming to the Commissioners in front of that tonight, and of course, to answer any questions or anything that you, that the Commissioners might have at this time.
Give me the numbers again for, the salary numbers again for the deputy.
Yeah, right now, right now, the numbers, each, each one is drawing $14,400 a year.
And how many?
That's $12,000 a month. I have three deputy coroners. So the proposal is to have a one full-time deputy coroner, which that, she's already making, they're already making $14,000 already, add the additional money to that, equals up to 35, which is like $20,600 for that one full-time.
Okay.
You say you got three now?
Three now, yes, sir.
You want to take one and make them full-time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then two? Just the two part-time?
Yes, sir. What is proposed is probably eventually the one part-time is going to go back to a per-call basis.
Okay.
Chairman, that would just be for, I was just looking, the budget year ends in June, right? June 30th? June 30th? So that'd just be for the remainder of the year? So that wouldn't be, what did you say? What was that number?
No, it, it'd be over the whole year, like next year, but I mean, it wouldn't be that much this year.
What, what, right, but, but next year, you would put that in next year's budget, right?
Yes, it would be next year's budget.
But if, if you wanted to do that now.
It'd just be the difference of now?
For the remainder of this budget year?
Yes, sir.
Which is not 20,000?
No, sir. No, sir. It'd be, it'd be, I'm sorry, it'd be in the next year's budget. The whole, the whole amount would be in the next year's budget is where it'd be, but this year would be just like a pre-rated version of it.
If it's approved, it'd be in.
Yeah.
Budget, okay.
Yeah.
Do we need?
But you, you're asking for that now? For the remainder?
Yes, we asked for the full-time now, yes, sir. And then whatever the remainder would be up until the new budget comes in July.
So we, we need to do a budget amend, amendment? Does Kim need to bring that before us for a budget amendment to his?
I don't think you'd need to do that now. If you want to go ahead and authorize that, I mean, we'll prepare a budget amendment if necessary. I think we'd want to wait and make sure that, I mean, there may be enough.
Right, right, right. That's why, okay.
Has Kim given you that blessing, sir?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Yes, she is. The main thing was just for the position to be approved.
Got you.
Okay.
And then we're going to work out all the details as far as the financial wise, but just giving you a number, that's about the range the number is going to be in.
Okay.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, sir.
Right now, this is February.
Yes, sir.
You're already at? I know there's no way, I mean, that we can project, we hope it stays low, but you know how that goes.
We, we, we had 10 calls last week. Just 10 calls, we had 10 calls last week. And right now, where the numbers are running, if they keep running where they're running, you'd be probably somewhere about 250, a little bit more for this year.
Yes, since you gave that information, so the 10 calls last week, what was the nature of those calls? I'm just trying to get a feel for the.
Most of them, I think, were.
Natural, Tanyan, it was natural.
Most of it was natural, natural deaths. I think we had one, I think we came back with one accidental, accidental overdose of fentanyl, and I think it was one, no, when the suicide last, we had a suicide a couple of weeks ago.
We had that one on the interstate.
That was the, the two, the double, double fatality, I don't even say.
No, a single, a single one.
Oh, a single, yeah, that was in January.
Okay.
Yeah, that was in January, yes, sir.
Just trying to get the people, what's going on, on the streets, as it says.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. Thank God, the, our COVID numbers, numbers I gave from last year, they were probably a lot more numbers that were not positive, that we didn't know anything about last year, but those are the actual numbers are the ones that we knew were actually positive when we went into the residents.
Okay.
Chairman, that number's a little, probably a little south of $8,500 for the rest of the year, even with benefits.
Okay.
And it is not.
Okay.
Not really significant.
All right.
Chairman, your.
Point out, too, that they have already developed a job description for that. Mr. Pierce worked with Mr. Mosley to do that, so that's already been done and returned. And so there's a position already created there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Chairman Taylor, motion?
Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and allow the coroner's office to have a full-time, one deputy coroner full-time.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. Commissioner Freed, do you have another question? I heard you, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Right, I appreciate it, Chairman. Just for Mr. Pierce, so, so these numbers for, for suicide for last year?
Yes, sir.
Was this included for Stewart?
No.
Right.
No.
But this year?
Those are just in the county.
Right, but this year, we have those, those numbers, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. I was just making sure.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There's some of the numbers that you see Commissioner Frazier's on the, in the Folks Stewart cases from last year.
Uh-huh.
Some of those, some of those cases were, what we, how we grouped them, we grouped them all into like hospital cases and actually cases that we actually worked actually on the installation. So for example, like if we have somebody go to Win Army passing the emergency room, then we have to go out. Last year, most of them were actually dependents that were like living here with other soldiers, other spouses, or family, and they passed in the, in the housing area on Folks Stewart.
Okay.
Most of the, what happens with Folks Stewart, if there is a soldier, actual soldier, we are notified about every death on Folks Stewart now. What we do is if it's a soldier, we turn the case back over to Folks Stewart once we get the information, turn it back over to them for them to handle their investigation.
Okay.
They just give us information, pretty much. But the actual case that we're involved with are actually dependents and.
Oh, families. Okay. So, so even if it's a soldier and they give us that, that information, I know it won't go down as a, as a statistical number, correct?
It will for us. We, we, we give everybody, if we call it a case, we make a, we make a number for it.
That's, that's what I was saying, that.
Yes, sir.
Because, and, and can you do me a favor and I guess for the rest of the board as well?
Yes, sir.
Because I think it's important for us to keep a number, keep a close eye on the suicide rate and also with the drug overdoses. Because just like you said, especially with this fentanyl going around, I, I want us to be more in a, in a preventive measure, you know, focusing on, on mental health and all of that. So if you keep me abreast of, of those numbers?
Got you.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, no problem. Yeah, we will, we, we will be meeting, I think, coming up soon with, we've had a meeting with Folks Stewart about some of their, with their behavioral health.
Absolutely.
And some things out there at Folks Stewart. So we're going to be actually interchanging statistics-wise to see what, because we have not had good, how would I say, as far as getting information?
Right.
We've not had a chance to get their like behavioral records and everything.
Right.
So we've been constantly working with them, so now we're going to have an access to get some of the behavioral records.
And I appreciate it.
So we have access and know what's going on.
Right, right. And then for us to, to see what we could do on the Liberty County side, you know, for, for that. Because I mean, these are real issues with suicide and with accidental drug overdose or overdose or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
And, and you know, a lot of people don't want to think that it's in their community, but it's everywhere.
It's everywhere.
So whatever we could do to, to help rectify that or, or help support, I'm all in on that.
All right, no problem.
Thank you.
No problem. My teachers that come and try to give a report as, as long as y'all let me on the agenda. I try to give, I try to give a report maybe every six months or so, you know, just to kind of give an update or earlier.
If you stay good with Kim McLaughlin, you come on.
Or email me, call me.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I can, because, yeah, because it is, it is, it's getting to a point now where it really is.
Absolutely.
And these numbers, I, I would love to see these numbers short trending back down, but with the, with the, with the housing and influx of people and Liberty County has grown, I don't see the numbers going, going back down.
I'm happy to report, too, that I've been in contact with Ms. Milner, passed from the school system. The school system has a very concentrated effort, too, to work with behavioral health in the school system. They are really concentrating on that, so you'd be proud to hear that, the school system, they're on it, you know, because it's becoming a real issue among our students and, you know, in our schools, of all age levels.
Right.
All age levels.
And, and that's the worst, is it get to be the teen suicides.
Yeah.
And, and that was for bullying and other things, but you know, you never, you never hate to see it. I mean, you, you hate to see that.
Right, right.
Hate to see it.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. The motion and second on the floor, lots of healthy discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve the full-time deputy coroner's? All right, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for him and Mr. Brown, real quick.
And Mr. Brown?
Yeah, a two.
Have they had time to get ready?
Yes, sir.
Are you, do you have a county car now? Are you still using your car? Mr. Brown, is he eligible to get a car out of the first, I mean, internet, I mean, enterprise?
I mean, certainly could. If we can get them, certainly you can. That's the problem with getting them, but yes, sir. I would think so, whatever the board wants to do there.
Well, I was going to say, what I, what I have, what I have been doing is been using my own vehicle.
Doing mileage.
And the, you have the option of charging, of course, mileage, but I don't charge mileage. It's only I get fuel. I don't charge the mileage to the county.
That's why your budget stays so low.
Well, you know, that's why when I can come and hope, I'm coming in front of y'all, you know, y'all be very gracious, you know?
Yeah.
You know, but I mean, I just, I just try to be very, as conscious as I can.
Right, yeah.
When it come to funds, because I mean, I'm a taxpayer, too. And so I just try to be as, as lenient as I can and still try to be as effective as we can.
Right, okay. We appreciate it.
But a vehicle would work, I mean, you know, I can get there.
Hey, I was trying to figure this out. Are you turning down the vehicle?
No, 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 I take, I take as much as y'all want, you know, I mean, I could. Uh, but, I mean, I've just, I've just, I had, I did have one before, and, um, it was an old Crown Vic. Um, that I returned back in, turned back in, and then I never really requested anything after that, so.
Mr. Brown, could we look into that?
Yes, sir. We probably found him another Crown Vic.
I was going to say. Probably the same Crown Vic, right?
Wait, EMS got that one.
I'd be glad to get with her, see what's available, what you want.
All right, no problem, no problem. Thank y'all.
But it will affect your budget, sir. Thank you, Mr. Corner. All right.
It hasn't been affected in years.
All right. Buy and report it. But the grow.
CBV, same birthday.
Movie time.
Oh, yes, picture time. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our buy annual report, we usually come in January, but unfortunately I was ill then, so was not able to come, so we pushed it to February. So I like to tell my stories with pictures, um, just to show you some of the fun stuff we've been doing. We do try to, might be seem silly to some folks, but fun stuff to keep the community engaged and happy and people upbeat. The, on the left is a billboard that actually ran this past summer, um, all over Hinesville, Liberty County, um, just showing people downtown Hinesville and places to shop. And on the right, it's just some of the silly things that we have fun doing in our office. Um, since we've been before you last, we did have the 17th Annual Blues Brews and Barbecue, um, in downtown Hinesville. It was very interesting to see because obviously COVID was still, um, important, and not that it's not now. But people separated themselves, stayed in their family groups, sat with the people that they knew, didn't get close to each other, were masked. So it was a very safe event. We had about thirty-five hundred people come out. Um, vendors ran out of food, so it was a good problem to have. Uh, Mr. Garrett, shown off, he ran out of food. On the right-hand side, it's actually a new beach towel, and I think you might have one that she just handed to you. Yep, a beach towel. Um, they're really nice. They're sandproof.
I see.
Yeah, so the sand doesn't get in, um, get in them. So just some of our new stuff that we have. We also had a business fair and job expo with the chamber, and we, um, had a groundbreaking for the co-in behavioral health. I think the chairman was there on Memorial Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then in August of last year, we had a little bit of an accident. Um, one of the large pecan trees at the Bacon Frasier House, a microburst came through downtown Hinesville, fifty-five mile an hour winds, and it happened to come right through our property. Snapped a pecan tree in half and totaled my car and our work truck. So that was in part of the carriage house. So it was very interesting trying to come back from all of those things, but we have very good insurance. Um, we also had our food truck festival in October, another no tables and chairs, trying to make sure that people were conscious and aware of COVID being a real thing. But we had six thousand people come in that five-hour time span. So very popular, food trucks ran out of food. We are having another food truck festival, March twenty-sixth and October twenty-second. We decided since they are so popular, we're going to do two this year. Um, our, our March one already has twenty-six trucks signed up. This last one, we had sixteen trucks, so ten more there. We co-hosted Celebrity Bar Tending, um, to support Carpathia Paws and their cat neutering and spaying program. So we raised about twenty-five hundred dollars to help spay and neuter cats. Um, it is a catch-and-release program, so they have them fixed and then they turn them back loose, but that keeps the feral cat population from continuing to grow. We do things like Paint Liberty Blue, which we did in October, and we, um, helped organize Downtown Gives Back, where local businesses agreed on one day to give all the money they, or five percent, not all the money. Five percent of the money they raised back to United Way to their Backpack Putty Program, which feeds almost seven hundred schoolchildren a week in Liberty County. Um, they raised twelve hundred dollars to give to the United Way. Just some screenshots of some of the things that folks have said. Um, you guys probably recognize Pastor Hayes and his wife Opal, just how nice it was to return to normal, um, and have the food truck festival and see people out, but behaving in a safe manner. Um, the folks that came out to Blues and Barbecue that we, some of the entertainers, they just put on Facebook how well organized it was and how welcome they felt in our community, because they weren't from here, they'd never been here. We, um, and then that top right is Jason with Hog and Bones, who's their, um, regional catering manager. He just said how much he likes getting our newsletter, because he knows at a glance what events are going on and what events Hog and Bones can get involved in. Christmas Parade. We did have a Christmas Parade this year, or last year. It's our twenty-fifth annual Christmas Parade. Again, very popular, almost back up to full level of entries. Um, we're a little under a hundred, we're usually a little over a hundred. So very nice. We also continued with our Liberty Loves Teachers Program, where we go to a school, um, every month, and we give the teachers and staff and faculty some little gift item that a local business, um, donates. So that one in the top middle was actually caramels and apples. So something silly, but something that makes them feel like our community values them. And a lot of times our teachers get a lot of that attention, but the faculty and staff do not. So I wanted to make sure even down to the janitorial level that everybody felt the appreciation of our community for the amazing job they do keeping all of our kids safe. Um, we put our Santa mailbox out, and that lady over there wrote about three hundred Santa letters in response, um, to all the littles. So just some pictures. We cleaned historic markers. We had to do that in October of last year instead of May because of COVID. That's my son, who was also one of your interns last summer, um, helping clean historic markers. The picture on the far right, so Liberty County Sheriff's Deputy, he's actually on the cover of our magazine this year with his K-9. We did an article about the K-9 program. They're very gracious, um, and very nice to work with. We also co-host a lot of the exhibits that happened at the gallery here downtown in one of the buildings that you guys own, and one was with the Hinesville Fire Department. They had a turkey coloring contest, um, and they anticipated they were going to get a forty or fifty, um, recipients. They had over six hundred children turn in turkeys. Um, so we had a lot more fun than that than I anticipated we were going to have, uh, and making sure that they all got installed. Um, let's see. We celebrated with our hotel staff for Housekeeper, International Housekeepers Week, and took gifts to all the hotels to give to their housekeepers, just to celebrate the great job that they do. And then the bottom left, uh, the county, or sorry, the Liberty County Development Authority, the LCCA, the Liberty College and Career Academy, and our organization, we started an Economic Development for Educators Program that kicked off last month. And there's thirty teachers that are enrolled in this program to learn about economic development in Liberty County, so that they can better educate our students. Um, there's three sessions. We're leading the tourism session to talk about all the tourism opportunities, but also film opportunities for our students. I mentioned Food Truck Festival. Um, we also have a group of students at the Liberty College and Career Academy who are doing mini marker movies. So they're doing eight movies based on historic markers in downtown Hinesville. One of them is at the historic Bacon Frasier House, where our office is located. So I went and chatted with students about the history of the house, so they would have some narrative to put behind it. So we're looking forward to see our video. The College and Career Academy did start a film program, so this is one of their first projects. The far right, we kicked off Simply Liberty again. We had stopped due to COVID, um, but we decided to, uh, start that again. So our live cooking show that we do on Facebook, and Jody and Lee Smiley were some of our first guests. And then Pastor Hayes and I did it, I think, last month. We're in the bottom right. Um, unfortunately, Opal, his wife, was sick, and he still wanted to do it. He can't cook, so he made me cook. So he could be my sous chef. Just some of our Facebook posts that have done really, really well. So you see that one on the far left, that had an organic reach of almost five thousand people, and that was a pretty early screenshot. So that means we didn't pay for that, um, kind of traffic. Went on Martin Luther King Junior Day. Um, Food Truck Festival did really, really well. I'm just announcing that we were having another food truck festival. And the lady was like, why are you not doing this sooner? Um, somebody else commented and said, why don't we have one every month? And I said, because I need to live at some point and sleep. Uh, we also restarted our, um, table tent program. We had put that on hold during COVID. Um, so we print, we are printing those table tents again, eight hundred of them every month. That's that far left picture to go in local restaurants and doctors' offices and nail salons and the airport and all kinds of places, so people know what events are going on. We reprinted, or made new brochures since we've been before you the last time about shopping opportunities. Uh, and then we've been having a lot of contests on our Facebook page. That's what that far right is. If you haven't been to the Cozy Bean in Midway, it's Midway's Coffee Shop. So we've got some gift cards from them and our, um, our tea towel and paired them together and did giveaways. And you can see how well that did, forty-one hundred reached, again, without having to pay for any of that kind of traffic. We also started our spouse tours again, and these folks are on the steps at Dorchester Academy. They really loved learning the history there, and we really loved telling them. We've gotten kind of discouraged, again, because of COVID, um, at the attendance at spouse tours. But we had one lady, I don't, Ms. Gales at the top right. Um, she's the French General's wife that's, um, out of Fort Stewart right now, and she really, really loved the spouse tours. And she told me I wasn't allowed to cancel them, um, that she was going to get, uh, our attendance back up. So she has done that, and the last three, we've had big groups of people. We just had one this week. Um, we actually staged a luxury picnic for them on the grounds of the Bacon Frasier House, and they absolutely loved it. And then we also, um, did a field trip for our Liberty College and Career Academy Advanced Photography Students. I serve on their advisory board, and they usually take field trips to Savannah, um, but they're not allowed to do that right now. Um, so we organized a field trip for them around Liberty County, and we sponsored that and had that hosted for them. Took them to the Smoking Pig and got them lunch. Most of them had never been there. And you can see the kid laying on the boat ramp. He just thought that was the coolest thing. He didn't know there was coast and water in Liberty County.
People don't.
Yeah, so we had a good time educating them and letting them know what there is available. I think I pushed the wrong button. Okay. Film, um, Jazzman's Blues, which is a Tyler Perry movie, is supposed to air in twenty-twenty-two. Um, that is on Netflix. We already have worked on our second film permit for twenty-twenty-two. Um, most of you probably saw all the filming that took place in Midway, um, for Cave Dwellers, which is a working name, um, in front of Midway. And then we had a safety meeting yesterday for another film that's coming at the end of March. So very excited. The newest one that we're working on now is a four-point-four million dollar local impact. Um, it's a ninety million dollar production. And then, um, an episode of The Excursion aired in August of twenty-twenty-one. Some of the grants that we've been able to apply for or are applying for, and then some accolades. I was selected as the Martin Luther King Junior Observance Association Community Service Leader for twenty-twenty-two. I was also accepted into a program called the Georgia Young Game Changers. Um, just made that age cutoff. But it's a leadership action program.
Get it while you can.
Yeah, uh, very excited about being a part of it. I was asked to be a speaker at the Georgia Downtown Association Conference. I celebrated, celebrated eleven years on the job, and Desiree celebrated one. And that's all I have unless you have questions.
I guess maybe I'm a little lost. Is, this was the chamber or the CB?
I just combined them both.
Oh, you just combined them both?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was, I, I was getting a little.
Yeah, we're all kind of intertwined anyway. The only dedicated CBV staff person is that young lady right there, Emma. Most of the rest of us were part-time, one and part-time the other. Any other questions? I do like your new lettering. That's new since last time I was here. Looks really nice.
Thank you.
We're upgrading.
Thank you.
It looks nice.
Yeah.
We're upgrading, yes, sir. Yeah, uh, I, I watched some of the, uh, live streaming of the City of Flemington meeting where you were talking about the hotel motel tax. You might want to, this commission, well, I mean, I speak for the full commission. My thinking was that when we approved it here, that Flemington had already gone through the process.
They had already approved it in twenty-eighteen. They did not have their resolution written and signed.
Okay.
And that's what they were talking through, is the language of the resolution.
Okay.
So they have voted. They, again.
Okay.
We're on the language of the resolution, whatever, however you want to say that.
Okay.
Hinesville City Council.
Yep, and Hinesville passed theirs today.
Okay, so everybody now is.
Everybody is.
All right, all right.
Good to go.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, girl. Okay, sir. Uh, we will excuse Commissioner Gillis for another event. Um, let's see. Let's, let's hear now for, uh, I've been getting some phone calls from, um, citizens of broadband, especially citizens of East Liberty County. So I put in a call to my friend Mark Bolton at Coastal EMC. I know the EMCs are, are looking at that. I know it's part of the governor's plans too. So Mark put me in the very capable hands of Mr. Chris Fetis. Fetis, and he's here today to kind of bring us up to date on where Coastal is with that. So good to have you, sir. Welcome to the, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. I'm up there to kind of show you, uh, where we're at, where we're going, and I wasn't sure how well you could see it, so.
Appreciate it.
Hey, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we just lost one.
Okay, I'll come back, I'll get one.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, uh, just a quick overview of what Coastal Electric is doing. Um, Coastal Electric has always had a, you know, a goal of high reliability for our coastal, uh, members. So part of our reliability isn't just, you know, aluminum wire and steel wire and copper. It's also communications. And so we've been deploying fiber optic cables to our substations for a few years now. And it's always kind of been our intent that, you know, once we hit the substations, what can we do next to communicate with our devices? So, uh, yeah, we decided that we were going to, in conjunction with this, um, broadband opportunity that came to the EMCs as a result of Senate Bill Two from a couple of years ago, that this was the time to go ahead and start deploying fiber all the way down to the meter, to the side of the house, right? So this primarily is a smart grid deployment. But with fiber optic cables, I mean, you can do so much more than just read a meter, if I'm going to bring fiber all the way to the house. And so we design the system in a way that not only can we read that meter and communicate with our devices between the substation and the meter, but we can, uh, provide gigabit service to the customer, the member. And so that's where we're at. We've been designing, it's been, you know, everyone who's been through the, trying to initiate a project during a health pandemic knows the challenges of resources and, uh, just trying to stay fully staffed, as well as leveraging, um, you know, all your, uh, partners, whether it's consultants, whether it's your, uh, material suppliers, et cetera. So, um, we created a wholly owned affiliate, Coastal Fiber. Let's see if I have a pointer. There's our new logo right here. Some of you may have been to the, uh, public announcement down at the coast, um, over the summer. Uh, we partnered with Darian Telephone. So, you know, Coastal EMC, we're going to build what I would call the backbone or the middle mile or the, you know, the real fiber infrastructure. Um, but we, we don't have any experience of, um, bringing fiber into the home and setting up routers. You know, we'd have to hire staff and diversify our workforce to do something like that. And then, you know, Darian Telephone is just right down the road, and that's what they do. So, um, they're good people to work with. We've, we've been having a conversation. We've done joint construction projects with them in the past. So here we are, we have a partnership. So they will take the fiber, you know, from the meter and into the house in the name of Coastal Fiber. So they would kind of act, we kind of have a support agreement between the two companies. All right, so, um, this is really a four-year plan, but we're going to try to get it done in two with labor materials permitting. So you could kind of see Phase One A. This goes down Highway seventeen and from Riceboro to South Newport, and that's going to be our tie with Darian Telephone. There's going to be an enclosure down there at the county line, and our fiber is going to splice onto their fiber, and that's going to bring that, uh, broadband access to the World Wide Web up through their gateway, right? And then, so that's, that has to happen first before we could do anything. And then, um, we're going to start basically at the end of the line and work our way back. So you'll, you'll see, um, these other phases of one. Phase one was kind of big, so we just kind of broke it up into, uh, smaller parts. So you can see, uh, Colonel's Island and Sunbury, and we'll be working our way back. Phase two, you see, would be, uh, um, one ninety-six and Homestown. This is still part of Phase one here, which is, uh, you know, Lewis Frasier. And, um, then Phase three, which would be kind of like your Limerick Road, Lake George, Isle of Wight area. And then Phase four, as we, uh, go down one nineteen out to Allenhurst. Currently, um, we have built this section right here. So we have made this connection from Riceboro down to South Newport. We haven't spliced it all together yet, so that's the next step. So while this main backbone up, if you will, has been built, and they're waiting on the splicers. You know, they've already gone down Sandy Run and Retreat, and they're working their way to, they can start, until they can head over to Trayport and start building down Allen's Highway. So the idea is that, um, the crew is here, and, uh, if they, if they work faster than we think, then we might be able to do a four-year project in two years, but we're not letting them go. And it's, uh, Kennedy Broadband Construction. They did some work for Canucci. Uh, I believe they're out of Glenville, Reesville area.
This young lady is, she's on the board at Canucci.
So you, you might be familiar with some of the work.
I am.
They did some work for, uh, help building that network path that we have from EMC to EMC headquarters all the way back to Atlanta.
So what's your, what's your, your timeline then on, on doing the splicing with Riceboro and South Newport? What's your best guess on when you have that?
Well, we, we've already been talking with the splicers, and what the splicers like to do is they like to, they don't want to mobilize in until they have, you know, a good amount of work. And so once they, uh, I'm expecting that they'll be here in March.
Okay.
And then, so you can see that we have, you know, this is all kind of crystal ball stuff, because, uh, but what we're hoping is so this corridor here by April, um, will be able to, uh, bring service to the customer, to the member.
And that's the Riceboro, that's the Riceboro area?
That's correct, sir. That's from Riceboro down to South Newport, that Highway seventeen corridor there.
Okay.
Mark, is the, um, so the.
Yes.
Mark?
It says Mark on the agenda, because, um, Mark was the initial contact.
Okay.
I could live it tall.
Yes.
But I am Chris. I, I haven't introduced myself, I'm sorry, uh, if you don't know me. I am Chris Fetis.
Yeah.
I've been with the co-op for fifteen years.
Okay, that's right. But I just want to make sure, is, is Darian there feeding, they'll feed your whole grid?
They'll light it up, yes.
That they're, um, from Darian, okay.
So we're all learning new, you know, fiber terminology. We all have our electrical terminology, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, for a, for like, the fiber version of a substation is called like a fiber hut. You'll see like a communication hut that are kind of like, uh, already pre-made, and you drop them in with a crane, pour a concrete pad for them, and that acts as the substation. So you could bring just like two fibers into that hut, and then you can split it out thousands of times. Kind of like the transmission coming into a substation, and then the distribution goes out.
Yeah.
I like to make a lot of electrical analogies.
Well, that's what we know, is lecture.
I heard you talk about splicing. All right, uh, I'm over here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Only lit.
I know, yeah, mass and everything, yeah. Uh, whenever you're dealing with, with the splicing, uh, every time you splice, is it going to lose some type of, uh, connectivity? Or how, how does that work with, with the splicing?
Oh, yeah, decades ago, whenever you would.
Yeah, I'm old, so I, I don't know.
Well, you do, anytime there's a splice in anything, right, whether it's metal wire or fiber, the cable, there's going to be a little bit of a extra impedance. It's not this straight path wire that was built at the factory, right? But the splicers today, um, those decibel losses are almost negligible now.
Okay. I mean, I, the reason why, I'm not just asking for this, I'm asking for, I, I have a business over in Savannah, and they told me my internet is terrible because of splicing, so I did.
Yeah, it could be a, a copper network, I don't know.
Right, I'm just taking notes. I'm just taking notes over here. Yeah, because, and, and just like you said, I know, I know in the past, it was that, you know, the, the more that you, you spliced off of any type of connectivity, you lost a little bit. So, so you saying now. It's a button on the side for silent. But, yeah. But, uh, I, I, I know, uh, just like you said, so, so now, substation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you call it the fiber hut.
That's right.
Two going in, you said thousands could go out.
That's right.
So all of those thousands, they still have to splice off of, of those as well?
Yeah, you, you can split a fiber. I think right now they have equipment, you can split one fiber sixty-four times.
Okay.
Um, but that doesn't mean that's how, how we're designing it. I'm just saying that's the capabilities before you have losses. But I guess what I'm saying is inside that fiber hut would be your electronics.
Okay.
And that's where all the lasers are. So, you know, once you come into that, uh, fiber hut, um, you can be communicating on the backbone, right, going back to the source, or you could be communicating out towards all the broadband customers.
Mm-hmm.
And then you'll have a, that customer will have, you know, a fancier router in the house that, that you could buy at Best Buy, because it has to be able to take fiber optic cable.
Right.
Into that router, so it'll be a special router. And it has its own version of lasers. Sometimes they're just like powerful LEDs, but, and it'll shoot light back towards the fiber hut. And so everything's traveling at the speed of light.
Yeah, right, but it, but still, wouldn't that still deal with the connectivity from the, from a distance? If, what, what, what I'm saying is if, if I live twenty miles away from, from the hut, and someone lives five miles, wouldn't they have a better connectivity rate than me?
But now we're going to get into the theories of relativity and Einstein and.
I, I, I'm just.
Wavelengths and like, but, uh, yeah, so light, speed and distance, you know, really isn't a factor until you kind of get to a, you know, kind of a.
Yeah.
Okay.
Universal scale.
It'd be better than what they got now, I'm sure.
But, but, but light doesn't, you know, five miles, twenty miles.
It doesn't make a difference.
Doesn't differentiate between the two.
Because what I'm told, and whatever they have now is dropping the signals that tell me, kids are having a problem doing schoolwork and all that kind of thing.
It's all getting ready to change.
Those are the calls I'm getting, so I'm happy to hear you say that. So I, I happen to think, I said, I, 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 we got the invitation to your announcement, I didn't get to make that. But I have been watching the news. I know the governor's been working on. But I have been watching the news, I know the government's been working on it. I know the EMCs have been very involved in it, so that's why I said, let me just call Mark and get an update on that. So the rest is history, that's why you're here. So I'm glad to hear where you are in the process, so we look forward to.
We've been looking forward to this too. It's been a long time coming, lots of planning. Yeah, we started this process really even before the Senate Bill 2 was clarifying that the EMCs could do this.
Yeah.
But here we are.
Yeah.
So Mr. Chair, this would actually help out the head stop building that we're building in Riceboro and the Riceboro community and the Longreach community.
They'll be in Phase one.
That's right, they are in Phase one. Now, I will say that right now the EMC has a reason to build to our meter, right? EMC don't have a real reason to build to a Georgia power meter. So we have to, you know, layer that in as, as we build out. You know what I mean? But the EMC member is going to obviously get the first priority. But if there's obviously, like you said, that new building.
Right.
Yeah, those are the type of accounts we want to serve also. And we are designing the system to serve all households along the way.
Okay, we're sure it makes good sense, the business sense.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's capacity, volume, drive.
The more, the better, and you know, it's going to, anytime you make this kind of investment in the community and you bring a new technology, I mean, we envision what's going to happen, but there will be those pioneers out there that'll be able to do more with this connection, whether you're working from home or schooling from home or virtual reality that's coming next. I mean, you know, we probably haven't even thought of all the things that are yet to come.
Okay.
Yes.
On that side, because that's where all our new development is going anywhere. So it'll help with our economic growth.
Tamin is right, sir, Tamin is right.
Yes, it is.
Tamin is right.
And thanks for the class on splicing.
You're welcome.
I took notes.
Listen, man, you almost need to have a.
Alert, look, I took notes.
You almost need to have a.
We have a little workshop later, right?
Having a splicing ribbon cutting. So keep, keep us posted, you know, with Mr. Brown on when that.
Sure, yes, Joey and I will stay in touch and I'm sure we'll make some kind of, you know.
I would.
Splash, advertising splash when we connect that first customer.
Those folk are waiting.
Oh, I know, they're stopping by the crews and talking to them and.
Are they? Giving them cookies and water?
Right, well, we've launched a website where they can sign up and go ahead and pre-register so we can determine a level of interest. And I think within a week, we had over 500 people.
Wow.
You know, it's kind of hard to get people to put in their information anymore, right? Name and address. We had over 500 in a week, so.
Okay, good job. We can help with that, let us know.
Thank you.
That's nothing. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Give Mark our best.
I will.
All right. I'm moving fairly well. I see, I'm holding her, I'm holding her. Chief Darby, come on, we will.
I had a wonder, when was his birthday? Yesterday?
Yeah, his birthday was yesterday.
Birthday boy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
While he's coming to, and I know he's going to talk about the contract.
My bad, I caught it.
This is, this is an item that was in his budget for this year, so it's, the funding is available for if he goes there.
Okay, all right.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm coming before you to ask for approval to enter into an agreement with Palmetto Fire Apparatus. We did enter an agreement back in 2017. We utilized them as a pilot program while we were trying to bandage some fire trucks as our department was getting up on its feet. At this point, we are trying to truly enter into a maintenance contract with them. One huge benefit that we have found with this company is they will be doing all maintenance, when I say all, literally 98% of any repairs to these fire trucks at the fire station. Your oil changes, your air filters, from changing out headlights, spark plugs, all that stuff is done at the fire station. There is a very small percentage, and actually, we have one vehicle that is already up at their, their shop, that kind of had some specialty work and they were really the only company around that could do it because the fire truck no longer, fire truck manufacturer is no longer in business, so they're having to do fab work. But that fire truck is headed up there and it's suspension work. But as far as dropping pumps, Commissioner Thrift, I'm sure you remember, a couple of years ago, we had a fire truck sitting out in front of Gun Branch with a pump dropped down. That was actually the same company. They do everything right there at the fire station, so it does help out. This agreement will cover everything from bumper to bumper, tires to ladders on these fire trucks. So it's our certified EVTs, it is our pump testing technicians, it's our engine mechanics, our transmission mechanics, you name it. And if they can't do it, they have their own vendors that turn and feed into their shores. They are based out of South Carolina. So there are some fees in here as far as travel charge and whatnot. Outside of contract, those prices are a lot higher. Inside of contract, those prices are a lot less. With this agreement, I do ask that we renew this on a budget, financial year basis. So tonight, I'm asking for approval to run from March 1st through June 30th. And then come sometime in June, I would turn and propose to Mr. Brown to either through him or through y'all to renew this lease or this agreement again from July 1st through June 30th of 2023.
Or it just becomes a part of his budget request for the new year?
Yeah.
Right now, you're only looking at, what, three months?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any questions for Chief?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve.
A second.
That's a maintenance agreement.
We approved the agreement presented, we've been told that.
I appreciate it, Commissioners, thank you.
Funds are available, all in favor? All right, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Good to see you yesterday at the City of Heinzville's groundbreaking.
Yes, sir, I'm out and about all the time.
Yes, sir, had to hold the county up, had to hold the county up.
Mr. Chairman, he's just getting, he was picking up some notes for our fire station.
Yeah, I don't blame him.
Oh, that's right.
All right, Green Space Administration, can we do that?
Yes, sir, real quickly, this is just a renewal, also budgeted item with Georgia Alabama Land Trust to monitor the mandatory green space conservation easements that we have in the county. Year-to-year renewal on that agreement. They do two reviews per year, if you remember, and furnished an annual report. And I'm happy to tell you that all areas that were in reservation or conservation status are, are in compliance this year.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve Green Space Conservator Program.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Which in a second, we approve the Liberty County Conservation and Green Space Program. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Joy, I know, in the past, they used to come present to us every now and again.
And I can get them both, that's not a problem.
I'm not just, I just thought about, it's been a while, but not that there's any, if nothing changes, then there is no need for that.
The good news is nothing changes.
All right, before we go to Mr. Brown's report, in order today, we have Ms. Lisa Thomas, Mr. Marcelo Page here. Ms. Thomas made contact, so did Commissioner Stevens about the upcoming Ahmaud Arbery Walk that's going to be held. So Ms. Thomas, if you come to the podium, just present yourself and just give us an overview of how this all came to be, and then we'll do the proclamation, Mr. Brown.
Excuse me, thank you, thank you Chairman Lovett, of course, my Commissioner, Ms. Stevens, and Mr. Frazier, Ms. Thrift, and everyone else. Saturday, February 19th at 10:00 a.m., we're, we're having our, our second annual Unity in the Community Ahmaud Arbery Memorial Walk, Run or Jog, excuse me, at James Brown Park. And first of all, I invite each and every one of you all to attend. As you remember, Ahmaud was killed on February 23rd of 2020. It was horrific. And we had a, our first walk was May 23rd of 2020. And ever since then, we've been in touch with the family. We have close ties with the family, excuse me, I'm going hoarse. I, I know the mom and the dad, and we just kept in touch. And I told them how Liberty County was such a unified community and how we came out for them, that we're going to have another, another walk in his remembrance. And they were thrilled. And then I reached out to my Commissioner Marion Stevens and from there went to Chairman Lovett and then some of our leaders of our community. Dr. Pamela Scott, First Lady of Bakington Missionary Baptist Church, Hermina Glass Hill, Historian, of course, our very own Representative Al Williams, Justice Godfather. Pastor Hayes, it's just been, just wonderful, the city of Heinzville. Everybody has just been thrilled and honored to participate. So Saturday, we're having the walk. And the best part about it, his dad and aunt and his sister will be in attendance. The mom, Yvonne, won't be able to make it because of the federal trial that's going on. Sometimes they hold the trials on Saturdays, and she's wore out, to be honest. She's wore out. But we're going to give her our blessing and let them know that they're in our hearts and in our minds. And then when I, excuse me, and then I reached out to Commissioner Stevens and then spoke with Chairman Lovett, you guys just amplified the unity that we have in our community by helping us, you know? You know, Liberty County has so many awesome residents, awesome people, that after you have the awesome people, you get awesome leadership. And for you guys, I just have to say thank you. I mean, you guys are great. So thank you and please come out and be with us, get some steps in.
Yeah, thank you, and let me say this before we do, Mr. Brown, you have a copy of the?
I do not, sir, but I'll get it and read it, I'll be right there.
I'm a believer in grassroots organizations, and ever since I've known you, you've been a grassroots person who's been busy trying to make the community a better place. So we appreciate, you know, your work. And we certainly enjoy in this effort, but I just know that you do other efforts besides this one. So I just want to appreciate you for being a community activist, I guess they would call you. You didn't just, you could just either sit down and just enjoy your own time, but you're always out doing things, trying to make the community a better place. So it does not go unnoticed. And there's a song that says, may the work I done speak for me. So your work speaks for you, Ms. Lisa, and we're glad to have you here today. If you, while he reads, if you, is Marcelo coming, you come, y'all come, come and stand, stand right here behind us, come on the podium. In a minute, we'll, we'll sign and take a picture of you all, just come around.
Right, Ms. Thomas.
Come around and stand.
This is a proclamation, Ahmaud Arbery Day. Ahmaud Barquez-Aubrey was 25-year-old African-American man whose life was cut short on February 23rd, 2020. His death has symbolized the need to eradicate racism in this country. Whereas Ahmaud Arbery was born May 8th, 1994, and his life ended so tragically on February 23rd, 2020. And whereas Ahmaud Arbery's life was taken in the act of racism while he jogged, whereas the nation bore witness to the killing of Ahmaud Arbery, we, the citizens of Liberty County, Georgia, stand united in eradicating racism in our community. Now therefore, I, Donald Lovett, as Chairman of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, stand in solidarity with leadership and the citizens to proclaim February 19th, 2022, as Ahmaud Arbery Day. We ask the Liberty County residents to participate in the second remembrance walk for Ahmaud and come together at James Brown Park in Heinzville, Georgia at 10 o'clock a.m. and walk 2.3 miles with a memory of Ahmaud Arbery in our hearts and minds. And witness whereof, I have set my hand in the great seal of Liberty County, Georgia, affixed the 17th day of February, 2022.
Commissioner, if you would come in for the picture presentation. You just grab your side of that, Marcelo. Over there?
Right there.
Nobody see.
Thank you, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. My Commissioner, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
My little brother. Okay, okay, yes, you told me, you told me, thank you so much.
Thank you, dear.
I have a shirt for you.
Okay.
What size?
Thank you all. Thank you for your kind words about our community, very accurate. That's why we say Liberty County proud, Liberty County, yeah, Liberty County proud, all right? You all are welcome to say, you may be excused. And I'm glad you were here, though, to hear the, hear the report on the broadband for East Liberty County. I know you'll take that news back.
And I've been giving them water.
Yep. I know you'll take it back. Yep, thank you, ma'am. All right, Administrator, report, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir, I laid a copy there of just the scheduled events and projects that we're tracking here. And this is not all inclusive, this is from the administrative side, from finance personnel. Some of those wouldn't dare go through the whole report with you. Just to point out a few on there, under finances, splash projects, we have had signaled the mayors that we want to go in and sit down and talk to them, not as the official meeting for the splash call, but to go over that and talk about that and lost and cemented government agreements with them. So we're awaiting a date confirmation back from the mayors on that. We did have a meeting this week, Teams meeting with Mr. John Culbertson, who's finalizing the countywide Polycart study for us again. And we expect to have that present no later than your mid-month meeting in March. So that's coming to you pretty quickly for some decisions there, we're doing a final review on that. We have taken the CIP budgets in, staff's under review of those now, and you received your 2023 budget calendar a couple of weeks ago from Ms. McLaughlin in there. Now, we are finalizing with Chondrian Associates the Living Wage Study to do that. We expect to have that also no later than March, middle of March for y'all. I'm sure we'll have it by then and have it finalized for you to consider. Just a couple of things on vehicle procurement, and y'all know this, but we're going to go ahead and review all the CIP offerings for our heavy equipment into the next three or four years. We've got some garbage trucks and things we need to get on order. The delivery time for those trucks is about 18 months. So we're going to go ahead and may fast forward or fast track some orders into the CIP process ahead of time, realizing that obviously you won't get them and have to pay for them for at least 18 months from now. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve there. Good news is under the ambulance procurement, we got an updated picture yesterday from Custom Works Body Shop, and that is looking good. So actually, they've already got a couple of dates scheduled for Crystal and the Assistant and Steve Coleman to go to Custom Works to look those over and be part of that pickup process. So we're, we're very anxious to see not only the new logo, but have those units on the road. So that's good. If you allow me to, I'll come back to those events because I do want to check a date with y'all. I know we've got some conflicts on the Commissioners' part of that. Under other activities that are in there, I just wanted to point out we are reviewing some family medical coverage options under your Blue Cross Blue Shield Plan. As a matter of fact, with Anthem, we've already had an initial meeting with them on that. So looking for some options to help out that and actually some new plan types maybe for the Commission to consider as part of that process. That's a quick-moving target because that actually renews in May. And we have open enrollment that starts in May, so we'll try to finalize that as quickly as we can. A lot of construction projects either in the works or going on. You're familiar with EMS facility. It has bid, we've vetted, the contractors, the committee has met and scored that. That is coming to you also in your mid-month meeting in March, which is great. Joseph Miller Fire Station opens on the 8th of March. So that most likely will come to you for consideration if everything looks good in the April timeframe. Both of those projects, including the EMS project, we were on the phone this morning looking at financing options, and we'll have those to present to you on the EMS station. And then likewise, we'll follow up. We'll get, dear, get into all that detail with you tonight as far as possibilities with rolling notes together and some things we've got as we look at the fire station. You're familiar with Joseph Miller Park, the pavilion. I got a note made from Mr. Long to go ahead and try to get that back out for bid again. If you remember, it was pulled off the table because of a high cost. Health Department Facility and Voter Registration Office are both in the programming. They have met with those staffs, met, had initial meetings with both staffs. I can tell you from talking with Mr. Buckley and looking at it, they've already developed the square footage designed for those buildings. They now want to go back and have a second meeting with those staffs. We should be scheduled in the next couple of weeks to finalize that as they start to do some preliminary sketches and drawings on both of those facilities, which is good.
Are the Health Department meeting go?
They haven't had that since we talked with them. That's what I'm trying to push out and get them to go ahead and meet with them. We have gone ahead and put the Road Department Shop in the programming mode. In fact, Mr. Fettis and I from Coastal EMC, you know, have been talking about going in, how soon they're going to get that timber cut so we can get that land acquisition done on that side. But in the meantime, that facility programming is moving forward. And I will tell you. tell you that, um, y'all mentioned it here, we had, we had talked about it already, you know, I had talked about it with, with Frazier, is the ability to go ahead and move mosquito control over there also, and we think there's enough land to do that and try to accommodate his chemicals and all there, because his facility, you know, is one that, that really, really needs to be replaced, he's working out of a single-wide trailer. Only other thing I mentioned for you is the US 84 Connector, which stays on track, that we had a meeting on that the other day, they are about 42% uh, uh, finished with right-of-way acquisition on that project, it's due to be complete by FY '23, which starts July 1st for the state, so, uh, construction is actually, utility relocation and construction is actually supposed to take place in FY '23 for, for the state of Georgia.
Do you have any drawings of these two projects, the 17 and the 119 project?
Uh, we got some clear, I sure do, I'll get Mr. Long to send a digital to you, uh, those are the two we presented to the District Engineer.
Okay.
For their consideration, so I'll be glad to send those to you, yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, and, Mr. Chairman, if we could, I, I know that we had set, we were trying to coordinate, uh, some shift schedules and, and, uh, and everybody's schedule, as far as the Commission meeting dates, we had sent out something about trying to do that March 30th and 31st, but I think you're, did you, I think you indicate you're gone on, on then.
I'll be gone, yeah.
So I wanted to see if, while I had you all together, um, if you had any ideas.
And then.
I show, got three calendars here, but I show on the interstate calendar.
Right.
That the next chance it probably comes up there.
April.
Would be towards, yeah, it would be April. And so is it not running, it looks like a couple of open opportunities on the 6th or the 7th of April, Commissioner Frazier.
I'm, I'm.
Double-check me there.
Oh, I'm on it.
I figured you had it. Or at that same time at April, which is that last week of April.
So you're off on the 7th and 8th?
That's, well, the 6th and the 7th.
6th and the 7th.
That's correct.
Either day's good for me in April. We'll bring a cake.
Right.
And ice cream.
And ice cream.
Yeah, we can do that, that sounds good.
The 6th is not a good day for me, unfortunately, I hate to even say that, it's good for.
Yeah, I'm sorry to put you through this process, but I did, while I had you all here.
But you put it in on the 7th, if we did it 7th and the 8th, or?
The 8th, we're on day shift, and Commissioner Jones and myself, uh, we're on the same schedule.
Really? I'll have to fix that.
As of right now.
Yeah, as of right now.
The thing we run into, um, the thing we run into the last part of April is budget presentations on the 26th, uh, ACCG, in fact, as I'm sure you're aware, on the 28th and 29th.
Don't speak that in existence.
So it gets tough. Maybe we'll shop it, and then I'll get Maria to touch base.
Okay.
Since we've got everybody's calendar, I don't want to keep you here all night looking at a calendar.
Well, we can at least book the 7th, I guess.
The 7th will work.
Okay.
Yeah, that can be one day, haven't it, that's right, the 7th?
Well, not, you know, um, so this is a little tedious, you, before you work from like 9:00 to 1:00, but I, you know, if you wanted to do it for the day.
An all-day thing?
You could have some late breakfast and lunch and, and work through it, I mean, I, I think, I think we'll make a lot of progress in one day if you want to do that.
I can do the 7th.
Let's just make the 7th an all-day thing.
Do the 7th.
Yeah.
I appreciate y'all, Joy, y'all changed that. All right, March.
No ahead of time, there's a decade, that time too.
Uh, other, other thing to tell you that, uh, I think has, has popped in here now is a couple of other things we're working on, uh, one is, uh, a water assistance program that we just became aware of, in fact, I was with, with Ms. Hamilton, day of the Head Start Project down there, which is just looking absolutely great, um, and we've received the paperwork now, the agreement to sign with the state of Georgia for our water system to be part of that, basically would, would help, uh, low-income, uh, delinquent folks on the water system, uh, that could be a very quick thing for us to implement, we've already had a, a spin-up call with, with Therese and our staff, so I would look to bring that agreement to you the first part of March, for y'all to consider to do that, and give you some more outline on it then, at that time, which is great, so.
Thank you, just FYI, that program's been offered to some of our municipalities, and so, some of our, what I'm, custom heard about it, it's, hey, why can't we get on that program? So we're working our way toward being a part of that, that network. All right.
Mr. Brown? I'm, I'm, feel free to reach out on any of these things.
What about the deal with the Briar Bay Park?
Oh, as far as, yeah, so, uh, you know, sometime back, in fact, I apologize, it has gotten kind of away from us all, but, uh, we, the board named the Briar Bay Park for, um, Mr. Henry Relford, if you remember, and so Commissioner Stevens got some information too this week, we've run that up to, uh, a company that does our plaques and stuff to see how long it would take, and we're waiting on that, we sent them that yesterday, uh, but when we get that date back, that the plaque may be ready, um, we would maybe at the next meeting, look to set a, a date, if that's okay, because we'll certainly have it by then.
Okay.
And we'll know the date.
All right, y'all coordinating with the family.
Absolutely.
Did you mention anything about the Sam Harris Gym, or you?
Uh, I can tell you, I didn't mention it, yes, I got the status on here, uh, so, um, on the Sam Harris Gym, we submitted plans for, uh, Soil erosion control review, we got those notes back yesterday, there were, there were none that were real significant, just some things that needed to be added to the plan documents, uh, those changes are ongoing this week and next week, we'll resubmit, uh, and we should be pretty good to go out, you know, uh, for bids on that or proposals on that in, in March, should be a lot happening in March.
Yeah.
All right, we've got a lot going on.
Lot going on in March.
There is a lot, there is a good bit going on.
Everywhere, every day.
Everywhere.
Every day.
This helps, thank you.
Yeah, it helps us track stuff too.
I've been busy.
Helps us track stuff.
Keep Mr. Joseph busy.
Anything else for the good of the order?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Good timing.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was gonna mention about our, uh, disaster relief project that we're working on, we're probably gonna close it out about the middle of next month, so if anyone has any items that they want to contribute, uh, you can drop it off at the Sheriff Office of Fire Station or any EMS station.
I'm getting a little older, can you remind me? I got, I got something for you. I mean, you're retired, I mean, you got time on your hands.
Was it water pampers?
Water pampers.
Hang goods?
All of that.
Yeah, yes.
I got ACCG, but Maria has this, uh, ACCG end of conference survey that's at our stations to complete and give back to her, or you can do it online, but it's.
She has mine already.
She did it, she's so efficient.
My, our ACCG friend would appreciate me re-emphasizing this, just that, uh, there's a very tight window there, so once that window opens, she, she really needs all those in hand, because that window will close tightly, not really, because they want to close slightly, because those places will book up, uh, so, you know, it'll become very difficult in Savannah all, all the time, but especially during that time, if you'll, if you'll let her know what you want to do, especially on the hotels.
Okay, good, we'll take care of it, all right.